The Bossier City Council Regular Meeting Tuesday, February 7th, 2017. I have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin, the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Don Williams, please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful summer day you've given us in February. Lord, we thank you for each person that is here today. Lord, we pray right now for our friends and neighbors in South Louisiana who are experiencing strong storms and tornadoes. We pray for their safety, Lord. Lord, we pray for our military abroad and here at home. And, Lord, we pray for wisdom for our nation, our state, and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and repeat our Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mr. Reverend.
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present?
Prove the minutes, January 17th, 2017, regular meeting and dispense with the reading. So move.
Second.
One moment, one moment, one moment. The computer just crashed.
Yes. How are you doing today?
Add-on?
We have one add-on. It'll be introduced, be add-on, it'd be number 32 under New Business, Introducing Ordnance to amend ordinance number 155 of 2016 for the renovation of the AMP Lift Station, first reading.
So move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
And I believe that we have one deletion.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we delete number 22 under New Business.
I'll second it. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Irwin, I'm waiting a vote for you.
You didn't get me?
I didn't get it. Okay.
Make a motion, approve the agenda as amended. So move.
Questions? Counsel, please cast your vote. Ms. Glorioso? You're gonna give us an update? Yes, ma'am, please.
Good afternoon, Counsel.
Good afternoon.
Well, here to update you on the downtown re-envisioning project. I was here earlier in December, giving you the briefing of that, and we've continued to make good progress in the construction of the project. We met this morning with Mike Boggs in our monthly owner contractor meeting, and do have a good schedule of events to happen that I think a lot of members of the audience, hopefully, will be happy as well with. We have learned that Arcadia, which seems to be one of the streets which is completely torn up because we had to redo the water and sewage in it, is now having the base rock put in on that street. The curbing is being put in this week and next week, and asphalt will be laid the week of the 20th on Arcadia. Going back, we also have Barxale Boulevard, which is having the curbing put in with the base rock. All of these streets, from Hamilton Road, which is Barxale Boulevard, to Watson Street, will have the base asphalt laid the week of the 20th. That will, that will put a little semblance of normalcy back into that area. The underground utilities, which is a portion of the project we're working toward in the Plaza area, will be put in place beginning in March. We have been continually working with Swebco, AT&amp;T, Sutton Link, in trying to work to get their utilities off of the poles that are in these certain blocks. And, of course, the electricity then, and all that is put underground, which is not just as simple as saying we're going underground. So we have coordinated with those utility companies in putting those power and those packages underground, and all of the actual physical underground placement will begin March 1. That means power will then can be coming off of the businesses that are affected between Arcadia and Mansfield Street and phased into this underground power. Of occupied buildings that are part of this, we're talking Little Taliana, the Parnell Bates Insurance Company, Bossier Arts Council has adopted somewhat, unoccupied buildings can, or 801 Barxale Boulevard and 310 Mansfield Street, which are unoccupied. But the city has agreed to go in and put the proper power into those buildings to make them operate when they do become occupied with underground power. There's been some concern over the sidewalks that have been coming into place. We're at a point now that sidewalks are beginning to be poured. The sidewalks are being poured in segments to hopefully meet the schedules of the occupied tenants that are in there. 500 block, the 600 block have a lot of occupancy in it. So we're trying to work around people's schedule as best as possible. The contractor has gone to most of the occupied units and tried to determine the best workable schedule for them, and we'll be working that with them in March and trying to get the sidewalks poured in place. But what we're trying to do is kind of like putting a cake together. You've got to put your asphalt in, and then next will come the pavers, the landscape, and all will start flowing into place in March and May to commence with a total project being done in June or July, as we've all talked about. We've almost ran three-quarters of the way around that track, and we're just about seeing the finish line. So I think things are coming along well. It's been hard on some of the businesses that are here today in the audience. We've tried to work around them and always give them, grant them access to the property. Might not have been a pretty situation, we are aware of that, but we've tried to do the best we possibly can. I do have another drone footage today I'd like to show you, it flashed about two and a half minutes.
I have three different files, which one is it?
It's the February update.
I have.
While she's teeing that up, the two buildings that belong to the Bossier School Board are on the ground. They are, they are being crushed and hauled away as we speak. There are six houses that have been awarded to a contractor for demolition, we're waiting on Centerport to remove those meters off of those properties, and they'll be hitting the ground. It's really gonna give it a cleaner look in that center. Already looks so much different not having those two buildings.
Is that the right one? Like I said, there's three different files under February.
No.
It should just be one. February. There's three different files.
Is this one?
That's one of them.
Okay. This is starting at Hamilton Road, traveling west back towards Shreveport. There's the Wingate Hotel, along, along Barxale Boulevard. As you can see, we have put the planters in, the base for the rock is already in a lot of that area. The dirt area to the north is where the sidewalks will be placed as well. Here we're coming up on 1100 Barxale Boulevard, the Antique Mall, working with that gentleman to try to work with him on the parking situation to make him feel as if he's back in place with that. Kittler's Automotive, we've made accommodations to bring in front-end pull-in parking as he once had on a certain part of that building. Coming up on the next intersection is Red River Refinisher. Again, we've worked with those people trying to account for the parking that they felt they had lost. We have nailed parallel parking and pull-in parking to accommodate that business owner. At the next intersection, we have Red River Motor Company on the south side, a vacant building to the north, then coming up on the intersection of Mansfield Street, building to the north is 801 Mansfield, I mean Barxale Boulevard, it's unoccupied. Next is the parking lot next to the Bossier Creativity Center, Little Taliana, Mancheck Consulting Group, the brewery, and then we're coming up on Monroe Street. The dirt area is the Plaza area. As you can see, there's pieces of that Plaza now becoming part of reality, life of it. The grassy area where the mural is, is the older section where the Metal Art Zoo once was. Then we're coming down Arcadia Street, and this is what I'm talking about. This is a dirt street that ties into Barxale Boulevard. This is pavement that's already in place. Now, this is the base pavement, gentlemen. What will happen in May, we will actually have to shut this street down once again to put the final base asphalt pavement down and the striping to put it back in, to funnel it. And then we're back at Traffic Street. Thank you. You have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Beth Carr, Bayou Bell Trade?
Good afternoon. I'm not actually Beth Carr, I'm her attorney Pamela Breedlove, and she asked that I speak so I can be, maybe a little more clear about what's going on to her and all the other businesses towards, really more towards into Barxale, but actually even the businesses, other businesses further up where she was initially flying.
Ma'am, excuse me, could you state your name and address?
I'm sorry.
That's all right, please.
Pamela Breedlove. I'm an attorney here, here in Bossier. I'm sorry, I'm used to being here with the police department.
And your address?
216 Rolling Meadow Lane, Bossier City, Louisiana, 71112.
Okay, and we, our city clerk is keeping, if we could keep it to three to four minutes, please, as far as your comments, thank you.
Yeah. Although my client, my client owns the Bayou Bell Antique Mall, it's been there for several years, this project has just about devastated and put her out of business. And she's not sure she'll be able to hang on till May, much less June or July now that we just heard. When this project was started, I'm, y'all were told the same thing she was, Barxale would only be, one lane would be closed at a time, not both lanes. About two weeks into it actually starting, both lanes were closed, and they were closed from May to sometime in December. And that, this is, what I've gotten here right here, this is a little, just a map, this little green area, that's what was closed from May to December. This is her store, this is where she's at right here. Hooten Hall is right beside them, her, right across the street. Then, now, further down here is closed. Ogilvy is closed. Arcadia is closed. Her customers can't find her. Only reason I can find her is because I live in Bossier City. As an antique company, when the Antique Mall came and made a lot of business for us over at Civic Center, she made, normally she makes a lot of money that weekend. Nobody from the Antique Show came to see her, and I doubt they went to the other antique store on Barxale because they couldn't find it. When this started, she was told y'all would put signs out for her so that y'all would know where, people would know where she's at. Months went by without happening. When you finally did put signs up, none were put on Barxale, which is the main street her shows on, her store's on. Nobody turned to go off Barxale. The first sign was putting her park, back parking lot behind her building. Her business has gone down by 50 to 60 percent every month. She's had to lay off every employee, so it's just her, only her and her husband can work the store. She is behind paying her vendors. She is behind, she had to borrow money to pay rent. And then, not too long ago, when they, when they, when y'all actually shut down the street that came up beside her, which is the only place really anybody could park to get to her, business went even worse. And then over that three-week period, they just left that alone and came over here and shut down Delha. At that point, nobody was getting into her business, and that's true for all these people. If something's not done to assist her and the other businesses, there's not, there's not gonna be any businesses down there for you when you, when you finish this project in July. And I don't think that's why y'all started this, but she literally may not make it till to May, much less July, if she doesn't get some kind of help from the city. She wouldn't pay, had signs made. They were up, but when y'all changed the area to do the construction, whoever's doing it for y'all took those signs up and they never came back. So people are not being able to get to her store. Her store depends on traffic. You can't park by her store. The only way you can get is to come by traffic and then find a place across the street and then walk across the street. And that's true for everybody that's in her building. Little Taliana has it a little bit better, but not much. I understand they're barely hanging on. Hooten Hall is hurting, and I think some of these people are here. I mean, I know this from my clients talking to them. They need your help. I mean, I understand you're trying to do something, but we need help from the city because by totally making it impossible for clients, for customers to find her, you're, taking away her use of her building. And so, I mean, she can't pay her rent because nobody's coming in to buy stuff. The construction was knocking things off the walls. She called and complained, and she was told, well, don't put stuff on shelves. That's really not a way to, you know, we need help with that kind of stuff. So she's hurting, she needs help, she's looking for the city to do something to help her, her and the other businesses, make it to when y'all get it back open. And we, she, they, you know, she can't borrow any more money. She's at, she's at her limit, and so are a lot of the other businesses. And so, although this looks great for what may happen next year, a year from now, not so much for her right now.
Is there someone else that would wish to speak on this subject?
Yes, sir. My name is Molly Corbett, and I am a resident of Bossier Parish, although I do have a Shreveport address. I reside in that little annex across the Bossier, Barxale Federal.
Your address, please?
Yes, it is seven, or 1,001 River Oaks Drive, Shreveport, 71104. And I'm, I'm here as a small business owner, but I'm also representing the patronage of these businesses. There are three businesses that I patronize on a regular basis that I've not been able to get to without either having tire damage to my car or just not being able to find the appropriate way in. The Flying Heart Brewery, as well as Bayou Bell Traders, where I am a almost monthly visitor, bimonthly visitor. And then also the Bossier Arts Council, where I am a board member. And we have difficulty getting to that space to park for our board meetings because we never know where the route is gonna be. We are concerned about these businesses that we patronize not still being there. I am personally very excited about the project that's coming to downtown Bossier. This has always been great news for our town and good to see that kind of progressive development in Bossier City, which I think is miles ahead of Shreveport to that end. However, I want those businesses that I love and patronize that are, that are there right now and have been up to these months, as I first became a resident of Bossier 13 years ago, to still be there when this project comes in. It's great to have these new glitzy businesses, and I'm excited about drinking coffee on the promenade, don't get me wrong. But I want to be able to shop at Bayou Bell, grab a beer at Flying Heart, and go over to my board meetings at Bossier Arts Council in the process. And I want them to still be there when this project is done. And I think the number one thing that we can do is make sure that that signage that's out there, which I photographed and shared with my friends on Facebook, is all-inclusive of all of the businesses that are represented in that stretch of land, because as of right now, they are not all represented in that signage. And that signage is incomplete, and it is inadequate because it is not stationed in enough spots along that route. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
You have to come to the mic.
Do we have a list?
There's gonna be a list. If you're speaking, you have to sign in. There was a list up there, someone must have.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think I may have. Lawyer, have it taken upon yourself. My name is Kathleen Hemphill. I'm, my husband and I own Hooten Hall Archery. My address is 1038 Crestmont Street, Bossier City. I am speaking because just like Bayou Bell and all the other businesses in, in the area, we have been hurt by the, by the renovation. We are actually, we were very excited about it, and we had expected some kind of, you know, decline in our sales during the, during the process, but we, we did not think it was gonna be this, this devastating. We are almost $100,000 down in sales just since it started in May. If we're talking about a few more months to go, I mean, we have put in a lot of money, personal money towards the business so it can stay afloat. Also, you know, we are seasonal, so when it was supposed, when we, when we were initially told about this, this project, it was told that it was gonna be in sections, that some, some sections will be put together before the new sections will be torn up and all that kind of stuff. Well, the whole place is torn up and nothing's put back together. So we've got customers from two hours away from here, can't get to us. I mean, normally, normally we get, you know, tons of customers, and this year, we, we actually don't have as, as many people that, that's coming in. We, we hardly have any walk-ins. We have spent four times as much on advertising, just to supplement, you know, just to tell people where we are. We have, we have worked a whole lot harder trying to get our business out there. My husband goes all the way to Bradley, Arkansas, just to get, go to the schools so we could, we could get our business out there. And like I said, we're still almost $100,000, you know, down in our sales. Also, you know, I know this is a separate thing other than the sales, but, you know, the, some, some of the contractors have not been very careful tearing out, tearing out stuff. They have damaged, you know, some of our, some things in our buildings, and that's one thing that, you know, I guess we'll have to, to discuss later. I know we're, we're in the process of taking care of that one, that portion of it, but it would help us a lot if we could get some kind of help when it comes to the sales, because we're still looking at, what, five, six more months before we open back up. That's, that's what I have. Thank you so much for the time.
I'm Kathleen Pate, and I'm the owner of Artworks Gallery that opened up just a few months before the construction started. And my concern at this point is the safety issues and the liability issues. Most of us are using our back doors. My back door is not conducive to foot traffic. It's a loading and unloading place, and just for employees to come in. And it's now, and it has a slant entrance. I'm concerned about that because if someone falls coming in my back door, I'm the one that's gonna be responsible for it. In the front, we have curbs that senior citizens and people with walkers and stuff have to come over those curbs to get into the buildings. We have very little parking now because of the flower pots, and so I don't see that that's gonna help us overall with our income. I lost two big events during Christmas because nobody wanted to fight the process of coming down there. It's dark at night. Every time you come in, I have to find a different route to get to my own business, so I can't hardly expect my customers to be able to find their way there. I teach a senior citizens, I teach adults, and then I teach children, and it's just, I'm, I'm just excited about the process of having that area, but it's really becoming a liability at this point. Every street is tore up. Not just Barxale, not just a couple, all of them, all the way around us. And I made a joke on Facebook about anybody that knows how to drive, I mean fly helicopter, that's just about where we're at to get into our businesses. I left my business a couple weekend, I mean, weeks ago, and there was a car completely submerged in cement over there by Red River Chevrolet. The whole car had driven into a newly poured section of the street slab, and so I think y'all should know about that. I'm just really concerned about the safety issues and the financial part. It's starting to really affect us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pate, what's your address?
My business address?
Residential address?
507 East Texas Street. I mean, 7111, Bossier.
My name is Mickey Royer. My address is 5301 Carnation Street, Bossier, 7112. I own almost half a block of downtown Bossier. I've been in constant contact with Boggs and Poole about the damage they're doing to my building. They have broken the slab under my office, and they want to go in my office and see the damage. Over the concrete, I have a three-quarter inch plywood carpet, a big glass display that I cannot move, a huge desk that I cannot move, and I cannot show them, but you can see from the outside, they've broken big chunks like this up under there. And around the corner, from the front to the side, there's a big crack, and I'm very dissatisfied with this. I'm in contact with my attorney, and we're working on it. Looks like we may have to file suit because they don't want to do anything unless they can see it. But they don't want to put out any money to come in and, and remove the things so, so they can look and see what damage they've done. If they want to pay for that or bring their people in and do it, I'd be glad for them to. I had a thriving business for years. I pay a lot of taxes on that. I own almost a half of the block. They came in and tore up a driveway that was on my property. I own, owned, it was a house there, but they didn't check to see where the line was. They just started digging up. They drove big machinery across my land. They, the Boggs and Poole people have eaten and trashed my place over and over. I go there daily and pick up the garbage. I found nails. I found nails and, and all kinds of staples and everything where I park. I, I had them clean it up, but, well, a couple times I asked them, they said, "Well, you'll have to talk to somebody." I said, "Okay, I'll call, uh, Mr. Boggs, Mike Boggs." Well, they cleaned it up real quick, because they didn't want me to talk to Mike again. But I'm, I'm just about fed up with the thing, and it, it, it looks terrible around there. They, it's trash all in the street down Watson. They haven't cleaned that up, only what I make them do. But they got to where they don't, they just look at me funny and walk off. So I clean up my, my vacant property daily, and I don't appreciate it. But I would like some help with, with, uh, keeping it cleaner. Y'all gotta get on to me if I don't mow the grass or something, and, and threaten me. But you don't want anybody else to do their share.
Mayor, I'm sure you're on it already, but would you check all the signage in there? I have Mark, just wanna check all the signage and do what we can do.
Yes, we will. Thank you. Thank you. I guess that concludes the comments, and we certainly are here to offer whatever services we have for those businesses that are located in downtown Bossier. And I'm sure with the mayor's assistance and the city council, we'll do whatever we can within our powers to assist each of you in your endeavors and businesses in downtown Bossier. So, thank you. Thank each of you for coming. If you would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to do so. If not, um, we can wait a minute or two if y'all would like to leave.
Mayor, I had a question. When, when they, uh, what is the process that someone reports a problem? Is it just they call Pam and, and communicate? Is there a, it seems like it's, there's enough of a concentration of things that there would be a process that might be a little different than, you know, the ordinary thing of just calling somebody. Is there a, is there one like that, or is there perhaps a need for that?
We've been processing all calls that come in. Normally, that's why they come in, from every kind of problem, and we, I encourage, "Call me if you can't reach anybody else." But Pam is a project officer. Either call Pam or me. But we've heard what you're saying, we understand the complaints, things that we, within our management control, and we'll address them. But they can call Pam, or they can call me?
Is, is the, uh, just, and we don't, you know, air it out here, but I, um, is the, um, the, the, the passageway to the businesses, is there a, is there a structured plan for keeping access to those businesses open? I mean, seemed to be, I was hearing a lot of access problems there. Is there...
Pam, can you come back up?
Is there, is there one that is somewhat formal?
Mark, Mr. Hudson probably can. He jumped up ahead of you, Pam, so... He was waiting, he's been sitting there, so he hadn't gotten a chance to speak. So we certainly wanna hear from the man, Mr. Mark Hudson. Thank you, sir, for being here today.
Yes, sir. There's always been access to all the businesses. Uh, obviously, it's a big construction zone, and it's real dynamic. You know, one day they'll be working on this street, and then they'll go to the next street. And, uh, so a structured plan, um, I'm gonna say no. It, it changes every week, but we always make sure there's access to the businesses. And Otis Smalley, the superintendent, has been very responsive to putting out signs where they, where he feels like they need to be. If Pam has a suggestion, another place, then he's happy to accommodate. We just, uh, I sympathize with the people, but, uh, it, it's a big project, and it's, uh, it's just, it's just what it is.
Mayor, I wanna say, I, I go down to some of the antiants down there in Cobb's. On the Coleman Street, there's signs all up and down for, you know, little tiny, little Italian, all different things. And on Delhi, there's signs pointing, you know, at, at each intersection. Now, in the last two or three weeks, they may have been taken down, I don't know, but I go down there quite a bit.
And actually, uh, Barksdale, it's been open, a good portion of it's been open for a couple of months.
We try to put the signage as we needed it. It was, it's such a fluid project. The signs sometimes aren't in the right place, whereas the project is closing streets, just trying to get those things maneuvered around. It has been difficult. And there was a mystery. There were signs that were all taken down one weekend. We don't know who took them. The contractor claims he didn't, no one in the area. We don't know what happened, so we had to replace, all those private signs. People had their own small signs at that point, but they went away, and our signs went away. So it was, it was, so we had to recreate all that. It's about a month and a half ago that, that happened. Really weird. But a couple of these complaints were the first I've heard of the building, the crack, with the conversation with Mike Boggs, first I've heard of that, so.
But, I mean, I'll, and I'll ask Mr. Hall to correct, but I think we better be careful that we don't get involved in civil matters that deal with the contractor and the owners of the buildings. You know, we're here to make sure that, uh, we can do everything we can from the mayor's perspective, the council's perspective. But when it comes to a civil action where property damage has occurred as a result of construction, that, I think we have to be very careful and advise that they need to deal with their attorney in court to seek, you know, restitution for whether it be bodily injury or property damage to the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I would, if, if it involves a civil matter or something, it may be that I would suggest that we ask Mr. Hall his opinion and let, and not direct them, or, or provide an opinion that would somehow bring us into litigation.
And/or try to mediate it, because it's not our, our job to mediate the differences between somebody that damages somebody's property and that situation. They're liable for that, to that responsibility.
We've tried our, we've tried to accommodate as best we can. What happened on Barksdale Boulevard, just to address the closure of the street, as we were gonna do half and half, we got into the situation where the old water lines were there. And that's when this project first kicked off. And if you all remember, that's when we were finding lines here and yonder, and then cut off Red River Motor Company at that point, uh, during, during this whole process, because we didn't know where the lines were. So it was hard to cut a straight line down the street and only work on half a street at that point. So that caused the plan to go awry at that point.
But counsel, we will address the signage immediately. And again, I'll say, anybody that's got a problem, they can call either Pam or myself, or Mark, but primarily Pam, myself, then Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions or comments, unfinished business?
Adopted ordinance to appropriate $189,945 to come from the 2015 LCDA Capital Bond Fund to be used to contract with Forte and Tablata Incorporated to complete the design of US AD improvements from Traffic Street to Old Benton Road. Final reading?
So moved. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance appropriating $40,000 from the 2017 EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to replace two-striker Power Pro Stretchers. Final reading?
So moved. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance appropriating $30,000 from the 2017 EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to expand and improve the drone technology needs of the Bossier City Public Safety Department's. Final reading?
So moved. Second. Questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. My name's Keith Kotrell. My address is 502 Southwood Drive, Bossier City, 7111. Yes, counsel, I own a company locally owned here, and we have four drones currently in operation. We are a 333 waiver and a Part 107. We primarily dealing with oil, gas, environmental EPA inspections, not really here in Bossier. We're all over Louisiana and Texas. I caught wind, I read the article we had here. My only concern, I volunteered, our company has volunteered our services twice. We flew the Red River when it flooded down around the boardwalk, and our drone footage was used on local TV stations here, all donated from our company on behalf of public safety. We also went to Arkansas and did it up there. The only concern I have is reading the article. I wanna, wanna make sure, and if there's any way I can volunteer my services, the drones that we're purchasing, because I've looked at them online, and some of the perspective of what you, what you say is going to be done with the drones, I just wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing for the $30,000. My company's invested a great deal of money. We have two pilots, we have four crew members, things. I wanna make sure the council and people know that flying drones in a commercially operated area, as a retired Air Force pilot, that every time those drones fly, you need two people by FAA regulations. So I don't know when we say we're doing $30,000 just for the drones. There's two people, a pilot in command and an observer, and that's an FAA regulation. That's not me. So when that goes on those drones, and you're saying you're getting two, my math tells me that means you need four people available all the time if they're gonna fly those drones. So I don't know how we're planning to do that. I know my company takes a great deal of time, because not only is that thing, is some of us retired military, there's crew rest, there's that drug and alcohol related with the FAA. You don't just pick up and go fly that drone. There's maintenance requirements on those drones. We just, I just personally was involved in a conference down in Lafayette. The FAA is looking at enforcing maintenance on the drones, keeping records. If those drones crash, it's almost like a small aircraft. You have to file mishaps. We have to do that. We have a department in my company, that's all they worry about. If I go out and crash that drone, we have to file an accident rehab thing with the FAA, tell them exactly what happened, what that drone was doing, to make sure no property damage was done. It's a great thing, I'm all for it. We have a very expensive drone operation. You also said IR. I have volunteered my services the best way I could. I've called, I've contacted the mayor's office, I've contacted Sergeant, Sheriff Prater, we've contacted Homeland Security. We have a drone that can be used after disasters with IR equipment to actually find gas leaks, especially like mobile home parks. I can fly my drones, and I'll actually see a gas leak. The drones you're purchasing do not have that capability. I just wanna make sure that when we're purchasing these things, we are doing the right thing and getting the most we can for the bucks we're spending. And I just wanted to make that known to the council, and I wanna thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
You got your contact information on there?
Yes, I will, sir.
If you would, please, and, uh...
I do have cards available, too.
Just give us one of your card, if you get the...
Oh, and one other thing, too. My company, if you're gonna use drones and you're gonna use IR technology, I don't know firemen in there. There is a certification to interpret that IR imagery. And if we're gonna send our firemen in dangerous situations, and someone's gonna sign off on that IR technology, I just hope that would be another training that our firemen need to go into. Somebody needs to be certified to read that IR imagery, to detect any dangers that they're going into, especially in a hazardous area with fire, possible gas leaks, possible electrical fires or whatever. You just don't fly and look at a camera and say, "That's safe." You can do it, but if somebody's life's lost, somebody needs to be answered, be certified to answer that question, that they interpreted that IR imagery correctly.
Thank you, sir. I'm sure the mayor will be in touch with you.
We appreciate you sharing that information, and, uh, we try to be very strict and compliant with the FAA, but...
It's just, it's so changing dynamically, it's just like you were talking about. The FAA is still learning about it.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance reallocating $40,885 appropriated in the Bossier City Police Department 2017 capital budget for robot equipment and repairs to purchase tactical team equipment. Final reading?
So moved. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance to establish a revised sewer user charge for Barksdale Air Force Base. Final reading?
So moved. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. New business?
Witness opening of sealed bids for on-demand concrete asphalt repairs for public utilities.
Good afternoon, counsel. Um, we are opening the first bid as for the on-demand concrete repair for utilities. There's one addendum that corrected the bid form, corrected some specs, answered some questions, and changed the opening date. Uh, the engineer's estimate is $225,000, and the budget is $354,000. The first vendor is Bowman Grading and Asphalt. The bid bond is included, and it's for $86,495 even.
Now, the budget was 350 something?
Correct.
The estimate's 225, and the bid's...
$86,000.
I just, I'll never understand engineering. I guess that's why I went into accounting.
This is city, this is citywide on the, uh, repair...
It's for a one-year period. It's not all co, it's not Public Works. It's for the Utilities Department. So it's not to the degree that the other is, but that does seem low. All right, the next vendor is... Oh, CNW Contractors. It's for $271,000 even. The bid bond is included.
Misunderstood.
One thing's consistent about engineers, it's consistently wrong, you know?
Dave's Paving is 178,500. Dale's, I'm sorry, Dale's Paving, and the bid bond is included. Next, we have Mac Contracting. The bid bond is included, $222,500. The last one is from RVP Construction, $64,900, and the bid bond is included. Wow. Those are all over the place. We'll have to check the math, but...
You need to approve this. We'll wait and see if these people got this thing right.
No, no, sir. We're gonna prove it. We're approving it.
They'd be right.
I ask...
Somehow, we're gonna figure this out after we approve it.
I ask for...
I just wanna sit in on it, you know what I mean? And I might learn something.
I asked for the approval of that reading.
Yes, ma'am.
We approve this bill.
I'll second it. Any questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
64 to 271, that's a lot.
Well, and the estimate was 350.
Well, that's the budget. The estimate was 225.
Yeah, our budget, excuse me.
Yes.
All righty.
Opening of sealed bids for AMP Sewer Pump Station Rehabilitation Project.
Okay, counsel, this has one addendum that corrected the bid form, made minor corrections in the specification, included the pre-bid conference, and none of it impacted the estimate. The engineer's estimate is $550,000, and the budget is $550,000.
Wow.
So the first vendor is Axis Construction, $375,000 even, and the bid bond is included. The second vendor is Peck Construction, $390,060, and no cent. 390,060 and zero cents, and the bid bond is included. The next is Belt Construction. The bid bond is included. It's 374,256 even, $374,256. The next one is for... The next one is for Dixie Overland. The bid bond is included. And the last one is Pulli Construction. $459,000 even, and the bid bond is included.
So moved, we accept the reading of these bids.
Second. Questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Congressman, just for the T with information, the finance director had a medical emergency, couldn't be with us today.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one question about the paving. How was that quantified? This, Mark, would you know that, or does somebody know?
Mark, I believe in your estimates.
I mean, what I mean is...
There's unit prices, there's quantities and unit prices.
So they, the information that was presented to them was a quantity of paving put down over some period of time, specified as follows?
There was four-inch sidewalk, six-inch paving, eight-inch paving, curb and gutter. There was a bid item for saw cutting and removal. I'm like y'all, I'm kind of mystified by the range there. I was actually talking to a contractor yesterday and he was in the $800,000 neighborhood. And he called me this morning, he thought, "Oh, to heck with it, I'm not going to bid it." So we could have had an $800,000 bid to go along with our $64,000 bid.
So if it said, I mean, we don't have a piece of paper here that shows that, but if what you presented them just as a poor instance, it must say, it may say 100 yards of eight-inch and 500 yards of sidewalk.
Yes, sir.
But everybody's got the same number.
Yes, sir.
And then everybody, and then, and that has to be good for one year. Right?
Well, the project tells them in the scope that they're going to be moving around to do numerous small repairs that'll be done behind utility work. So they may be patching a trench across an asphalt street, or they may be repairing a small amount of sidewalk or a couple of street panels. But it spells out that there will be numerous repairs and they'll move around the city. But the bid quantity is designed to give them a representative quantity of work items that might be done in total based on that repetitive, small repair type situation. So they're pricing it based on the appropriate information.
As if it was the job. I mean, you present it as, even though it is speculative, the quantity everybody looked at in each category was all the same.
Right, that's true. It was a bid package and the quantities were put in the bid form. And I worked with utilities to get it in a usable form because this was the first time I think they've priced something out in this manner.
Yeah.
And so we worked with them to get it where it made sense. I can't explain the... A lot of times with these contractors, it depends on the size of the contractor and the nature of the type of work they do. If you get with a big street contractor, he's going to price the stuff out expensively. But if you get with a little, small contractor, he's going to give a lot lower number on that. So it's a lot about the size of the contractor and the type of work they normally do.
The idea that you could mobilize to repair things, wasn't one of these bids $86,000?
69.
64.
64 or 9, I'm sorry.
It seems unthinkable that that doesn't sound reasonable. It sounds like it's nuts.
Well, we tossed around with having a mobilization figure in there for each location. But we even called up a contractor that did this work for utilities last year and he didn't think that was a usable figure to have in there. He felt better with just the quantity, so that's the way we left it. So, I mean, we researched and talked to people and did the best we could with it. I mean, it's kind of an unusual, unusual situation, the way they have to work because the repairs can vary so much from one location to other. You may have two sidewalk panels in one place and you may have a big street repair in another. It's just, the jobs are different.
But when they bid it, they have...
It's all apples.
Well, we don't have to trash this out here. I'd be interested to see the paperwork and, you know. It does seem like an unusual challenge.
I'm sorry? They'll probably need to go to purchasing, upstairs into purchasing. Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, 129 Bobby Street, Bossier City, Louisiana.
Aren't we skipping those?
I need you to make a motion to continue them. Continue them.
I'd like to make a motion, we continue this.
Three, four, five, and six.
Three, four, five, and six.
Till February 21st?
Till February 21st.
Thank you.
You could have done that.
I can't make motions.
Need a second?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Number seven.
Do we hear all these together or just seven?
He just made a motion to continue all of them till February 21st.
No, seven, eight, and nine.
Oh, that's up to you guys, if you want to combine them.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about the same.
Okay.
Change to each of the stores, so...
Make a motion to combine them into one vote?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
Second.
You can make me vote against all of them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine, I'm voting against all of them anyway.
Okay. I didn't know, I mean...
Okay. Are we combining or...?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion, who made the motion?
I did.
Or a second.
Okay, they did.
Hold on just a second. Okay. This is to combine the zoning ordinances.
Seven, eight, and nine.
Yes, sir.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Okay. Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPTC. Petitioner Dollar General Louisiana Doing Business Dollar General Store 10632, 2100 Stockwell Road. Dollar General Louisiana Doing Business, DG Louisiana Doing Business Dollar General Store number 4748 at 2314 Bartstow Boulevard. And DG Louisiana Doing Business Dollar General Store 9231 at 4612 Bartstow Boulevard. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high and low content alcohol for off-premise consumption at a Dollar General store. You have a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
All right, counsel, before you, for all three of these items, you have an ordinance that has attached to it letters from Dollar General Corporation and a floor plan for each site that details how they will display, sell, and stock the beer and wine that they will be selling. You're to answer any questions regarding the three applications.
Questions? Counsel, questions from the audience?
I'm not going to support this. I just don't, I'm just not ready for, to see Dollar General going in and selling beer and wine. Next thing, you know, I think they own the Family Dollar, Family Dollar Stores, and these are like 100 yards apart and somewhere, some cases. And 100 yards from that, we've got another liquor store, 100 yards from that, another liquor store. But we really got to come up with some kind of zoning, you know, where there's news on it, whether they don't like it, I don't care. It's close, these things are close to neighbor. I've got one within 25 feet of a massive trailer park. You know, we're taking things out that these, and let's be, you know, the one I'm talking about is where, I go there a lot, a lot of poor people go there. But we're taking milk, we're taking frozen foods, we're taking things that these people need, replacing with alcohol. You know, we got to get some kind of distance between stores that sell alcohol. We need to come up with something. I wish I knew what it was, but I'm just...
Something we've talked about working on, hold a workshop, but we will certainly look into that. But it would require an ordinance change to include that measurement when we're measuring for alcohol.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I know we can't do it now, we thought about it, but, you know. You tell one guy he can do it, tell another guy he can't do it, I know where we're going to end up, you know? But still, I'm...
We'll be, we'll be looking into that and offering up some options at a workshop.
That's what we need to...
Try to get that done as quickly as possible.
Yeah, just think of some options we can do and come up with something because, I mean, every yard, every 100 yards, we're going to have a liquor store or something like that.
It's an important issue.
It is.
Any other discussion? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Adopted ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected public health, safety, public health and safety due to repairs needed to a water treatment plant, river pump station, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement for additional foundation added to the communication tower at the water treatment plant based on geotechnical survey analysis results, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to repairs needed to a water service line for Meadowview Elementary School, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance declaring that an emergency exists in the city of Bossier City which affects property, public health, and safety due to a drainpipe collapse at 1210 Elsa Jane Street and providing funding for emergency actions, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds in the amount of $575,000 to allow for the continuation of the city's fire hydrant and replacement professional services project, first reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds in the amount of $20,000 to replace 130-gallon Leland Cypress trees at the Red River Wastewater Treatment Plant, first reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds in the amount of $50,000 to make repairs to the non-podable water system at the Red River Wastewater Treatment Plant, first reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance declaring surplus to the needs of the city of Bossier City, three Harley-Davidson motorcycles, and authorizing donation of the same to the Red River Sheriff's Office, first reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating $17,000 to come from the general fund fund balance to provide for the city of Bossier's share to co-host the 2017 Louisiana Municipal Association Convention with the city of Shreveport, first reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance approving the attached amendment to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement by and among the city of Bossier City, Bossier Parish, and the Bossier Parish School Board for the development of and re-envisioning of the downtown Bossier City, first reading.
So moved. Second. Questions?
I wanted to make a comment. I originally did not agree with the amount to be spent for the track. And I know that the school board has now decided to use some money for the football field and put in synesthetic turf, I think it is. And I really did not know that the track was not being utilized because of its disrepair. And if we kept the original intent, then that track would be utilized more. But now that we are amending it, it's going to go to the football field. So I'm not in support of that, but I am in support of the money being used for the track.
Any other comments? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds in the amount of $35,000 to conduct a chlorine cleanse in the water distribution system, first reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to accept the dedication into the city street system, into the streets within plantation trace estates, units number one, two, three, four, and five, first reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approved parade permit fee waiver for the following: Bel Air Elementary Mardi Gras Parade, February 24th, 2017; Crew of Atlas Mardi Gras Bridge Closing Ceremony, February 28th, 2017; Crosswalk, 2017, on April 14th, 2017; and Sun City Elementary Mardi Gras Parade, February 28th, 2017.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt the resolution authorizing the hiring of a tax auditor, first and final reading.
So moved.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to adopt the Bossier Parish Louisiana Municipal Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire or promote one water treatment plant operator to replace vacant position in public utilities, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to fill three vacancies in the Public Works Department, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approved report of final change order for Big Airline Force Main, an increase of $188,408.04. Total cost of contract with increase $2,470,054.29.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approved placement in the official minutes, the reappointment of Lou Chandler as the College List Board Member of the Bossier City Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board, appointment effective March 7th, 2017, and expires March 6th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approved placement in the official minutes, the reappointment of William Schwartz as the College List Board Member of the Bossier City Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board, appointment effective March 7th, 2017, and expires March 6th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Appointment of Tommy Chandler to replace Charles Maxey as the Commissioner of the Board of Commissioners for the Housing Authority of the city of Bossier City, appointment effective February 7th, 2017, and expires July 8th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Family digging deep, the Chandler family to get him. I know, he's a good guy.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to amend ordinance number 155 of 2016 for the renovation of the AMP Lift Station, first reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Last Thursday, I guess the school board had a shadowing day for students in eighth grade. And, of course, my grandson doesn't ever want to shadow me, so I brought him up to shadow the mayor a little bit. We talked to the mayor.
to shadow the mayor a little bit. We talked to the mayor. Mayor, you know, he's quiet. Like I told Cliff a while ago, he did enjoy it. He did like his token, sitting on his dresser. And I want to thank Cliff and Ben for taking us out to the water plant. He really didn't know how, how much it takes to make clean water. He was very impressed with that, even though he didn't make it to the sewer plant with me. But thank y'all for your time, though. Mayor, you too.
That's awesome. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I have nothing to say.
All right. Y'all have a great week. Meeting adjourned.